I call the regular meeting of the Nevada City Council to order on Monday, September twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, six o'clock P M. Can we get a roll call, please?
Melissa Musick.
Present.
Henry Corbin.
Here.
Dane Nielsen.
Here.
Jason Sampson.
Here.
Steve Skaggs.
Here.
Sandy Eric.
Here.
First item is approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Dane and Jason, discussion. Seeing none, council please vote. Agenda is approved. Takes us to consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Sandy, Steve, discussion on consent. Seeing none, council please vote. That is approved. Which takes us into the public forum. Time to decide for comments from the public on topics of city business other than those that and no action may be taken. First, we have a swearing in of police officer Matty Friedrich.
Hello. So can I just bring in Matty Friedrich? Uh, Matty's from Montez, Iowa. She was up there attending college and senior bachelor's in criminal justice. Started her law enforcement career in Montez, Iowa as well, certified in twenty sixteen. And she was trying to relocate to the metro. Agencies and works out well for us. Having about eight years of experience and already been certified for happy to have her in this and her mom.
Okay.
Will I be come up here, Matty?
Great, great. Good afternoon. Hi, say your name.
Hi, I'm Matty Frederick.
You solemn sir.
You solemn and sworn.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
The C code of Nevada, Iowa.
The C code of Nevada, Iowa.
And I will faithfully and passionately.
And I will faithfully and passionately.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties.
Discharge all the duties.
With the office, police officer.
Of the office of police officer.
The city of Nevada, Iowa.
For the city of Nevada, Iowa.
As now as you're after required by law.
As now as you're after required by law.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Please, police officer.
Okay, next in the public forum, we have Andy Kelly.
Andy Kelly talked about eleven thirty-seven Sixth Street. So I was here and talking about some damage spread on the side of my building. Talked Brett a week and a half ago. Want to set up a meeting with Cory? Have you heard or is there anything set up?
We sent dates after we got our staff calendars aligned. I don't think that he responded today, though.
I have not received a response yet.
Okay. I've heard anything from Renaissance Restoration.
Yeah, I did. I did follow up to ask them if they reached out and they did tell me they have not. I did ask them to reach out to you.
No call yet.
Yeah.
Uh. What do we hope to find out when we do it for it?
I think we just need to have the conversation with everybody at the around the table and see what options there are at this point.
Are you guys still assuring me that you're gonna take care of the building?
I mean, there's probably council action that we required, so I can't speak for them. And we don't have an agenda item with options, so I don't think it's appropriate for them to worry.
Three and a half years, Jordan, you have assured me you're going to take care of it, right?
I said I would reach out to contractors and get them to come take a look at your building. You yourself have have said on multiple occasions, you don't think it's the city's responsibility to pay for that or take care of it. Which I agree because it was a contractor error that caused that damage. The city did not accept, did not do that damage or cause that damage.
I agree that it shouldn't be the citizen's responsibility to pay for it at this point. I think you should hold your contractor responsible. And you assured me, looking at Cory's email. There's some stuff we can agree with, but they hit it. It's not gonna be an easy fix. They want it to be fair. It has been more than three years. At least got some stuff wrong in there. They didn't inform me they hit it. I thought that they hit it and informed you the next day and you said it'd be taken care of. And then I followed up with you the day that I pulled a permit on Rick Martinez's remodel. You said, I said I'd take care of it and I'll take care of it. And I brought it up with Ryan Hutton. I think I show four or five texts over the next couple of years with him. And I have an email from you saying that you did tell me you'd fix the damage. And that you hadn't done it yet. I figured I'd bring the email in for everybody because the email was included in the packet. It's just the one from Cory saying it's my fault that I haven't taken care of it before now. I mean, I haven't taken care of it because I've been repeatedly told you're gonna take care of it.
And I and I have reached out to contractors and asked them to come take it the look, uh, look at the building. And I've also had people come and look at the building. Ryan has had people come and look at the building. Um, I've had, I assigned Ryan to take care of it and then I started reaching out to people so we can try to help along with the process. And I think that is the purpose of the meeting that we're going to be having with Cory when we can get the dates aligned so we can figure out the next steps and get a solution for your building.
Okay. So my concern is, and this is kind of how I figured the conversation would go, for three and a half years, you and Brett have assured me you'll take care of the building. And now we're in a meeting. We're kind of starting over. I need to have a, a meeting with your contractor. And you kept referencing that I'd had a meeting with him and they said that I should get two quotes, like take care of it. Looks like according to the email, the meeting he's referencing is the day I reported the damage. It doesn't look like there's another meeting that took place. That's, that's what he's referencing is three and a half years ago.
And that's what I was referencing in our last council meeting as well.
In your last council meeting, I, I know, but through all of the conversations and emails, you've said you'll take care of it. There I have no contact. Well, I do now because he's got his phone number on his email. I have no phone records or texts or emails or reports. I have no communication with Cory outside of the day I reported city project damage to the city building official. And I repeatedly reached out. And you guys have made efforts. You've reached out to construct. You've talked to him. You've emailed with him. It's always been in your court. We've got a timeline. So Cory's email, one of the things I think he's wrong on, I don't believe this happened in August of twenty-one, right? This was on tear out, sort of in spring. So I mean, his memory of it, I think, is a little shaky. This was tear out. This was this was the first part, right? Probably not August.
Um, I don't recollect when the damage occurred, but it was sometime between July and August, I believe.
Okay, I, I, the tear out comes in the spring. They start putting the televisions after that. So I'm figuring March, April twenty-one, I reported the damage to you and then followed up with you. Uh, texted Ryan and had in-person conversation, but texted him October seventy-two, November twenty-eight, twenty-two, December thirty, twenty-two, April twentieth, twenty-three. Texted Brett August tenth, twenty-three. It wasn't until March twenty-sixth of this year that you even let me look at it. And expressed concern how things have been going with construct. And also asked about the six eighteen building you understood had been damaged. And I said that at that point, it was probably a write-off. Uh, June eleventh, I got a call from Melissa at Midwest Insurance, kind of puzzled on it because she hadn't heard about it before them. And also a little concerned that it looked like construct had never turned in a damage report on it. Is that your?
That is my belief as well. Yeah.
Okay, so and my belief is everybody's hoped if we stall long enough, I'll let it go. Three and a half years. I've been told by you, the building official, that you're gonna take care of and by email that I followed up later. And I tried to work with Ryan. Three and a half years later, the contractor that hit it says they don't think it's fair they should pay for it because it's been three and a half years. So apparently I didn't say the magic words and I go to the meeting. And we see what the excuse is. Maybe they didn't actually hit it. Maybe my building jumped out in front of them. Maybe I didn't ask nice. Maybe they hope I'll die of old age. I've been asking three and a half years and you've been assuring that you're gonna take care of it. And in the last three months, you started taking action to take care of it. It looks like we can't take care of it because our insurance company says they're not gonna pay it, right? They say it's not a city claim. And nobody made sure that construct turned the claim in on it. So I can have a meeting. Unless there's something I missed. Three and a half years of being told you'll take care of it and now no assurance, right? I mean, I I, I don't know what to do. You can, you can really not fix it even harder. I mean, I apparently I can't make you. Brett, you've been telling me you're gonna, you've gotten alarms set. You're, you're checking on the calendar every two weeks, asking for updates. I'm being told tonight I get to go to a meeting to hear the contractor that hit it who's not responding to me that I didn't have a meeting with them in three and a half years. Maybe it's my fault.
So are you us, are you, are you saying that Cory never, are you saying what he said to her or said in his email is, is not true, that you didn't talk to him about getting quotes?
I didn't. No, I
Because I know last meeting you said you'd never talked to him and, and even on Facebook, you went out and had people say, hey, you're gonna meet with Cory on a, on a, on a city post. So just, just checking, like, did, did you talk to Cory? Did you not talk to Cory?
At the first day I reported it, there's two estimates, like three. Well, I said, I, I lent him a tool and I looked at him and said, man, you look familiar. And goes Cory Constru. Still loaned him a tool. We had the problem with the bad fork where the building, the concrete was sloped back into my building and Ryan took him down into my basement to show that rainwater was getting in. Separate issue. I reported it to whoever was in front of the building the next day and I reported it to Jordan. And I have in my phone, no contact information, no, no meetings, no correspondence at all with Cory. There's, there's no meeting that I remember and nobody told me to get two estimates. I believe about a year ago. Ryan's not here. I don't want to put words in his mouth. Six months, a year ago, they finally said, yeah, we don't know what to do. You can tell them to, to find somebody. At that point, I was about fed up that we had three years into it. It really looks to me like they're stalled. And I've been told it's gonna be taken care of. I don't need another job. I don't know anything about Meister. No, I, I had no meeting with Cory. No meeting with Cory other than the day after I reported it to Jordan. I'm willing to meet with Cory. And I said a week and a half ago, I'd be willing to meet with Cory. I'll take, right? Said I'd take time out of my day. I'll sit in a meeting with him. I'd like to look him in the eyes and find out what the meeting was. And I followed up on Friday, asked if anybody responded. I haven't heard from them until tonight.
Well, I, this is the first time I've been in the land of the living, so I apologize that there's a whole business day that's gone by without getting back to you. We have a meeting that we're setting with the contractor. That, that's the authority I have in this situation to make him come here and talk to us around the table and figure out what options we have. I don't think there's anything we can solve tonight in a public forum that's gonna be productive.
Frustrated with me, but it's been three and a half years and I have said on any time work, you've got the contractor that's claiming I didn't ask right, but is slow getting back to you. I mean, I will go to a meeting and we'll go another two weeks. I all right. I, I can't make you do it. I'm about tired of fighting it. I'll go to a meeting with Cory. Uh, but I, I want to point out, this, this has changed from the last three and a half years of both of you guys assuring me that you're gonna take care of this. And now tonight, we gotta talk to the contractor. Can't stay without counsel. Tonight's an entirely different conversation than we've had for the last three and a half years.
Anyone else here to speak in the public forum? Seeing none, we close public forum. Moving to Old Business A, ordinance number ten sixty, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. Ordinance deleting property from the Tax and Increment Financing District for the Nevada Urban Renewal Area of the City of Nevada, Iowa pursuant to section four oh three point one nine of the Code of Iowa second reading.
All move to approve.
Back in.
Steve, Melissa. Any discussion there? Seeing none, council please vote. That is approved. Takes us to B, approved change order number two for the Nineteenth Street Trail Project from TK Concrete Incorporated in the amount of fourteen thousand seven hundred ninety-nine dollars.
Move to approve.
Second.
Sandy, Henry. Seeing no discussion, council please vote.
I was gonna, wait a minute.
No.
Okay. Um, are we close to budget on that still? Because I think we, didn't we come in under and you had a couple add-ons since then? We're still doing all right?
Um. Yeah, I mean, we're, we're still under the overall budget in the original amount that we were doing. Yes, so
All right.
Um, some of these change orders, you know, for the fourteen thousand seven hundred ninety-nine, that, that wasn't any any way we could prevent that without opening it up and checking everything out. Yeah.
I understand.
Yeah.
We're still doing all right, though.
Yeah, it's still a lot cheaper than what we originally anticipated.
Thank you.
Went out for.
Okay, anything else? Council, please vote. That is approved. Takes us to C, approved change order four for the twenty twenty-four street improvements reconstruction project from Construct Incorporated, the amount of thirty-seven hundred dollars.
Move to approve.
Second.
Steve and Jason, discussion.
Is this, am I reading this correctly that we were, it was supposed to be in the bid, but it was not in the bid?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's something that we missed, HR, and it didn't include that um, how to get these two services across ten street. Um, the rest of the project, payments all means that C two where the payments stay in place. Um, if we did catch that as part of the original design, we would have had it added. I hope it's not boring anyway. Um, so that's where we feel like this would have been a, a cost of projects, um, regardless. So we did review constructs price compared to similar projects, uh, comparable projects with price. We found it to be in line with, uh, similar boring costs. And definitely cheaper than open cutting. It's on that way. So, um, with it being in line and, and yeah, that, oh, that's something we, we missed, but there, there was a cost. It was gonna be a cost of the project regardless, but, uh, that being experienced.
Seeing no further discussion, council please vote. That is approved. Takes us to D, approved pay request number four for F and G Avenue Street Rehabilitation Project from Inroads in the amount of two hundred eighty-nine thousand seven hundred sixty-four dollars and fifty-two cents.
Move to approve.
Back in.
Jason, Melissa. Seeing no discussion, council please vote. That is approved. Takes us to E, approved pay request number twenty-eight for Waystart Treatment Facility Improvements Phase Three from Boomerang Corporation, the amount of two hundred and one thousand two hundred fourteen dollars and forty-seven cents.
Move to approve.
Second.
Second. Henry. Discussion. Seeing none, council please vote.
Can you guys vote again one more time, please? This one.
That is approved. Takes us to New Business A, resolution number twenty-nine, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, resolution authorized in the relocation of streetlights in the Northeast subdivision.
Move to approve.
Second.
Dane, Melissa. Any discussion? Seeing none, council please vote. Approved. Takes us to B, resolution number thirty, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, resolution to approve an intergovernmental twenty-eight E agreement for combined law enforcement operations.
Move to approve.
Second.
Melissa, Steve. Need a discussion there? Seeing none, council please vote. That's proved. Um, takes us to C, discussion appropriate follow-up regarding equipment purchase for Parks Department.
Move to approve.
Second.
I just wanted to touch on just one more night up in fact that the, we're, our recommendation for you tonight is to purchase a John Kerry unit. Um, it is more expensive than Jordan. The front door does not need all the specifications. Um, also, it's about five point three percent higher. Our policy is five percent. So we're close. If we would go back and have to add these other things to it, drag that up some, then it would be well within that bias.
I guess I need to amend, um, on approve option one.
Okay. Okay, Henry and Dane, motion second. Other discussion?
Dave, I appreciate that you're trading in some equipment to kind of help offset some of the costs too, so that, uh,
Yeah, so we'll trade in a couple pieces to help like better operation, uh, any longer. And then we also have another unit, just to cover your legs. That being what you're doing for the street part.
I like that we're using a in-town business as well.
For sure.
Anything else? Seeing none, council please vote.
Maybe? Sorry, broadcast. Okay.
That is approved. Takes us to D, discussion appropriate follow-up regarding additional bleacher sets for the fieldhouse.
Free action forum, um, there in the packet. Just five years as we've gone through these initial months that, uh, um, give you some additional seating and, uh, you know, we can also move your events in there. And so we we noticed that before we could use the most, we do have space to put them in.
Move to approve option one.
I will second.
Jason, Dane, any discussion?
Will this be the, will there still be space for more bleachers? Will this be like the Max?
This is probably in
Okay.
Yeah, I know there's a need. I've been there on a few Tuesdays and Thursdays with the kids in the playground and it's, it's pretty, pretty packed out there.
I love that people are using it.
Any other discussion? Council, please vote. It is proved. Takes us to Bunker Gear, discussion appropriate follow-up.
Uh, um, this is, uh, the project for, uh, assistance to firefighters grant. So the total project cost uh, sixty-five thousand five hundred and eighty dollars, of which fifty-seven thousand four hundred and seventy-six dollars and nineteen cents paid for by FEMA. So the city's project, the city's will be eight thousand uh, one hundred and three dollars, which we have in our capital for that. Uh, you'll notice that we have a combination of gear. One is a little bit more expensive than the other. We kind of see this as a retention, uh, benefits for our firefighters. Some like fire decks, some like Lakeland gear. The Lakeland gear is kind of a new thing on the market. But, uh, I think if you give a volunteer firefighter a choice between two sets of gear, you probably have them to last because they did a big real year and the gear they're comfortable with. As we see Lakeland develop, I, I think we're gonna shift our focus towards one, one product, but they both look the same. I can tell you, this is the only year in ten years that we've gotten right on the order. Uh, definitely has not had to do redo's because of suspenders or something like that. And certainly the wear and tear at this point is showing that it's pretty reliable here. So I think we're kind of down to about our two choices of gear that we have, right? So appreciate if you consider that, even though that one is a little bit higher than the other.
Move to approve option one.
Second.
Dane, Sandy, discussion?
Just appreciate you getting that, uh, grant. Makes a big difference.
Got down to the last couple of weeks. I was nervous.
Good job.
Big difference.
Helps a lot.
Seeing no further discussion, council please vote. That is approved. Takes us to F, resolution number thirty-one, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. Resolution amending, resolution number eighty-six, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, expressing intent to provide economic development support to the Verbio Nevada LLC redevelopment project.
I'll move to approve.
So the I E D A provides tax credits for pro, uh, projects. And Verbio sent in a request to update their dates of it since they weren't fully operational. When they originally apply, applied for it, now that they're origi, now that they are up and operational, they requested with, for, from us and I A D A to extend that out. So it uh, it's a five-year, five-year contract starts in twenty twenty-six and ends in twenty thirty. Originally, it was twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-five. So they have not received anything or, um, went through that because they weren't up and operational.
Any discussion? We did have a motion and a second, correct?
You have one motion. Steve, you don't have, no, you don't have a second, I don't think.
I'll second.
Andy. Discussion.
I guess I would just add anytime that anybody applies for state money, that it has to be the city on their behalf. So people might not understand that, that that's state law, that we are the applicant on their behalf for this sort of program.
But the money is not coming from Nevada's.
Exactly.
Coming from the I E Ds.
Exactly.
It's state money that they receive, not city.
Other discussion? Seeing none, council please vote. That is approved, takes us to G, approve operations, operations and maintenance plan for Harrington Park, project C.
Move to approve.
Second. Melissa and Henry. Question. Council please vote. Is approved, taking us into report, starting with city administrator.
So we recently went to Fargo for inner-city visit with our NEDC. And also went to Sioux City for the League of Cities. The city did receive a People's Choice Award for the fieldhouse. And then the mayor also received an award for an outstanding leader and that award was called the Rhonda Woodsmith. Recently had a meeting with Boomerang, Mike, that was on Wednesday and we found out that. There is going to be a little bit of a delay for the lift station due to. HVAC units not being ordered timely and. It's really, it's about eight weeks for the actual units to come in and five weeks for it to essentially get painted with. I can't remember what it's called, I don't. It's like a. Yep, so that was pretty frustrating to hear on Wednesday when Mike and I were talking with them about it. Which ends up delaying the whole entire project for opening into January for testing, so Mike and I were on the phone. I had another meeting shortly after, but we were on the phone with Williams Brothers trying to figure out a game plan on. Opening and testing in January and that's somewhat of an issue because of the cold weather. And the biology that needs to be growing in order to get the plant operational and I'll let. Mike kind of touch on that a little bit more when, when we get to it, but. Also had water discussions with Sean today. And Tim and I went to the supervisors and presented our request for ARPO funding for the trail connection from Sixth Street over to Eighth Street. Met with Mike Micho with Capstone, he provided an update and he's waiting on. The last of their funding so they can continue to work on the hospital. At our first pizza pie loser meeting and then also met with contractors in the last couple of weeks with the pooling that is associated around Seventh and F. And how they're going to get that resolved so we can finish up that project. Be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Are there any requests for us for them ordering those HVAC systems?
So there's liquidated damages or basically they get, I think it's a thousand dollars a day that they would be. Getting fined essentially for not completing those if it's not done by a certain date, which that certain date would have been June nine of twenty twenty-three. So the liquidated damages is what we will plan on going after. Once we offer the completion.
And there's nothing else we can go after him with?
Not really, I mean, Mike can answer that better than I can because he wrote the contract essentially, but. It's my understanding that liquidated damages are, is really our only recourse for them.
Yes.
The concept of liquidated damages is that it's difficult to quantify what the cost to the city is, what's that damage actually costing the city, it's just a delay and so. You build in the, the LDs into the contract so that when we're signing, we're saying. Time is of the essence of this contract, if there's delays, it's going to be this much per day, so that is the damage that's quantified in the contract.
But theoretically, they could just never finish the project.
Well, at some point, there's breach of contract if they don't, I mean, if they just say, at this point, they're saying they're going to finish it, they're just delayed. If at some point they're saying, we are not going to finish this project, we have some other courses of action we can take. Then there's bonds in place to assist with some of that too.
I guess the only thing I have and I know we're working on it, but just keeping pushing on that CBD building. That we, we had in the public, just keep pushing on that meeting to get that one set up, I guess I was. I'm glad to see there was action on it or some steps moving forward.
Are you, you're talking about the facade?
Yeah, or no, I guess Andy's with public forum, just on getting that meeting set up, just pushing on that being timely and so I appreciate your report on that, but just echoing that, so.
Yeah, no, we'll, we'll definitely get that set up. It's my full intentions to continue working through the, the steps to get that finalized, I mean, no one wants to have their building or property damaged during construction project, so. It is my intention to get that going. I did send an email to Corey, Ryan, Mayor was included. And I'm just waiting to hear back on those dates that we chose, I'm hoping it'll come back on that he's available, I think it was the second, October second for one of those dates. So it'd be nice to have that meeting sooner rather than later.
Appreciate.
Do we have any reports on progress with the wastewater agreement with Spurk?
Yeah, we've corresponded back and forth, I think, three different times, so we're meeting with the development committee and Mike and Karen and Jordan and folks after this meeting. To work through some of that so we can respond again. And then the other piece is the treatment agreements, so I reached out to our bond attorney who was the last one on our end, who needed to look at it. And I know since I reached out, I think he's been corresponding more rapidly with Aaron, so.
I've been promised the end of the week. Okay, sounds good, thanks for the progress.
You have more?
What's that?
Do you have more stuff?
That's the biggest thing for my report, other than obviously the league conference, we get a lot of good information back and. The community really rallied around the award, we had almost sixteen hundred votes come in for that, so. We got a chance to meet the mayor of Garner, who their project was up against ours and I asked him what kind of Russian bots he was using because. They'd automatically get a thousand votes like that and every time we'd take a jump, they'd take a jump, so.
That's a positive competition.
Yeah, it was neat that we got to, got to give him a little bit of a hard time back and forth. Yeah, any other questions for me?
I do have a report.
Three parts.
I just wanted to follow up, at our last meeting, we approved our human services awards. Just a bit of background on that human services funding and how that changed over to the foundation. I've been on that committee as well, about three years, so since it. I think actually the year prior to going to the foundation, we were working on, how do we, how are we able to maintain it? It has been an issue of the auditors for the state of Iowa, it is. It's not a favorable way for us as a city to participate with our nonprofits, so as we looked for what would be a favorable way. The community foundation was firing up for some other projects, so it made sense where they already have an accountability. Machine there with an application process. With the opportunity to have an application workshop, so not only are we trying to help them with the city money, those nonprofits. But also the chance for them to learn about what other resources are there and that's part of that application workshop. So I feel like we have really made a big stride in improving the fund. We were able to fund every eligible application that we had and there was only one of those seven that had a reduction. And as you'll recall, part of our mission in cleaning up how we allocated funding went to basic human services, so. Food, shelter and clothing being those three types of, of services that we can fund as a public entity. If we allocate the fund, you know, get it out of our hands and it goes as a lump sum to that process that I described. So just want to be really clear, I think we've done a really great job of trying to enhance. How we can help the nonprofits in our community and we've had really favorable. Responses and application, the rest of it is, they have to report back to us, they don't just get the money, there's a reporting process, so that accountability again. Is, follows the whole process, so I think it would be, it's a disservice to what we're trying to do to hear the report that we heard, the comments that we heard at the last meeting. And on another note, Public Arts Commission is meeting on Thursday.
Other council reports?
Had the opportunity to be in leadership Nevada this year and it's, it's getting closer to the end, but. This last week, our project was basically, the, the class was split into two groups and we were given ninety minutes. It was Mrs. Skag's idea, I think on the topics. But our group got to focus on leadership, so or on, on volunteerism and it's, it's. I guess like my point is just a general call-out to the community that we always need more volunteers for all these different things, I mean, we listed roughly twenty-five. Nonprofit and or service organizations that need volunteers in this town and it was a fun video, got lots of views, lots of clicks on Facebook, but. I guess it just kind of underscores the need, there are so many organizations in this town that need volunteers and a lot of the time it's the same people that you see doing all these different things, so. If, if anybody's watching us on, on Zoom or anybody in the room, always need volunteers.
You have a list?
If you go to the Main Street Nevada Facebook page, there's a video that kind of lists them all on there. So check it out, yeah, you can always reach out like. I'd say the Main Street Nevada page probably would be happy to get you in touch with the right people too.
I think Emily at Main Street has a list that she can send you.
Yeah.
Anything else from council?
Go back to staff.
Regular routine maintenance operations and lab work that we do every week and. Did have to reach out and talk to George about our backup generator. Alliance came down, moved the transformer over to the new lift station and they put new underground, so we had to go on our generation for a while. We ran five hours after it got done, it started leaking out of the weef hole for the water pump. It's a nineteen eighty-six generator, so finding a water pump for us has been extremely hard. And we were looking at the concept of having to rent a generator, it was going to be like five thousand a month, but luckily. We kept looking at it and Mike Ackerman, he found us a water pump through an old owning site. Where all parts were bought out, so hopefully we'll have a water pump in a couple days, so we've just been keeping it, adding the coolant every day and then recycling it to keep it going and keeping an eye on it, so. But other than that, just routine. Thank you.
Great.
I'm good, thank you.
Mike?
So I can expand a little bit about on the wastewater meetings that Jordan referenced. Last Wednesday, we met with Boomerang or the lift station, just to get an update from them regarding the HVAC system for the lift station. That's when they informed us that they had not yet procured that equipment for the project. That, that equipment is essential for the operation of the station. It provides ventilation, heating and cooling, life safety systems that are required for that occupancy and. Entrance into the lift station, so that cannot be started until those components are in place and properly functioning. As Jordan mentioned, they indicated the lead time is about eight weeks for the equipment. There is one component that needs a specialty coating that takes about another five weeks. And then once the equipment gets on site, it'll take a couple of weeks to get installed and tested. All of this equipment was originally submitted over two years ago and reviewed by HR Green, so we do not know why. Boomerang or it's actually their subcontractor had not procured this equipment. We had been asking on the status of it as it had not been shown on the progress schedule for quite a while. And when we did finally hear back, we did find out that they just, for some reason, had not ordered it, they have no real. Explanation as to why, but. Because of that, it will push the projected startup of the lift station back to the end of January. Is what they're currently showing on their schedule, which then means that the startup of phase two, the wastewater plant. Could not occur until that time at the earliest. We had a call today with Williams Brothers and Ovivo, who are the equipment manufacturer for the oxidation ditch system at the wastewater plant. The meeting was to give them an update on the schedule that we had just learned about from Boomerang on phase two. But also to discuss the startup of the oxidation ditch system out at the plant. As Jordan mentioned, there's concern about starting up at a cold time of the year. That's a biological process that is very temperature dependent, it's not something that can. Work very well or efficiently when it's extremely cold. But our conversation today with Ovivo, we did get some positive news that they're not. Overly concerned that we would not be able to start up the system at that time, it just would. Take a few more steps or a little longer to kind of get everything acclimated. To be kind of running it very efficiently, so it may extend kind of the startup time if we do elect to start up. At that time, kind of in the February time period. We'll have to see how things go with the lift station and what conditions look like. The startup is going to be something that will take probably about four to eight weeks to get the wastewater plant kind of running. And so we also need to reach out to the DNR to see what sort of leniency that they'll give the city with regard to the discharge permit. And meeting limits, knowing that at the, starting up in the cold months of the year. The treatment efficiency isn't, you know, as optimal there, so our next steps are to reach out to the DNR, have those conversations. Continue to talk with Boomerang, Williams Brothers and Ovivo, coordinate all this effort. And try to make a good and informed decision that will ultimately. Create a successful startup of the treatment plant when it is time to start that up, so. Those are our next steps and that's just kind of an update on where we stand with everything on the project, so I'd be happy to answer any other questions you have. Thank you.
Good evening. Well, I'm happy to report that it's time to do FY twenty-six budget again. When I sent out some of the documents, I had several comments that people were like, didn't we just finish this? That's how I feel. So we're starting to work on those and getting some of the worksheets sent out. Still working on audit questions and some grant questions and working through some of those and. I'll be taking vacation next week, so I'll be off next week, if you need something, give Jordan a call or you can always call myself, I'll answer. Have any questions?
Nothing additional from you.
Alice?
I don't have anything.
I will piggyback off Dane's comment about volunteering, this will be the second time that we've worked with Bart Mitten for food at first and she really likes us to have City Day. A couple of times a year, so this Thursday, a few of us will be going, so if anybody else is interested, please just let me know.
Those are his questions.
Anything else from council?
Move to adjourn.
I'll get to keep the voting.
Oh, that?
The review of voting system.
Oh, yeah, I'll rescind my motion.
No, we're skipping it.
Oh, skipping it, then I'll maintain my motion.
Okay, keep it, any other discussion? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those. Okay.
Try to talk to that guy who's asked about volunteering stuff.
Yeah.